We'll call this work session Monday, June 5th. The order invocation given by Ms. Tolliver and the pledge allegiance by myself.
May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for giving us another day, another holiday that has passed. Thank you for the many blessings that you have in store for our city. Father, please continue to go with our first responders and everyone that make up this great community. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is to discuss the 2024 fishing tournament proposals from Chamber of Commerce. And that's four different tournaments, I believe. Mr. Roden, can you?
Thank you, Mr. President, Council, Mayor. Cannot believe we're talking about 2024 already, but they are, they're, boy, they're calling us like crazy getting ready, trying to get on the, on the calendar for next year. You should have them, I think, all in your packet. Whitney, you, you put, we'll start with the Angler's Choice. Angler's Choice Tournament wants to come back. They have not been here in probably three or four years. This is probably one of the better tournaments, one of the best tournaments, because every single one of these fishermen come from the Midwest. They come from Indiana, Illinois, Nebraska, just all in the Midwest. So there's nobody even close, nobody lives here close at all. It's a, it's a great tournament. They want to come here and have the tournament actually on a Thursday and Friday, which is another good thing, rather than it being on the weekend. They want to come March the 7th and the 8th, 2024. Estimating about 300 boats. So we're talking about 600 anglers. So it's, it's a big, big tournament. Initially requested $45 per boat. I've negotiated that down to $40 already. Then we have to provide six double occupancy rooms for them, also for their, their directors. So that is the Angler's Choice Tournament, March 7th and 8th, 2024. Any questions after looking at your pack, through your packets on that particular tournament?
Which one, which one is this, Rick? There's four here and I'm getting mixed up.
This one.
Okay, okay.
And you said 40 per boat? How many boats again?
300 boats.
Okay.
And again, these, none of these people live anywhere close to Alabama.
Have we had this one before?
Yes, we've had it several times before. One of our favorites. They, because they, they run a fantastic tournament, have been doing it for many, many years. Rick Burns is the tournament director. It's just been three or four years since they've been here. But this is the kind, this is one of the better tournaments, for sure. They're, they're, they're a very, very good tournament.
Rick, you said you'd negotiated down to 40. Is there a maximum? I know one of the tournaments has a per boat charge, but there's a maximum. Does this one have a maximum?
This one does not have a maximum. It's just straight $40 per boat.
Because, I mean, 300 boats, that's 12 grand.
Yeah.
And so, plus rooms.
I can certainly negotiate.
Okay.
I'll be glad to negotiate up to a maximum. Might want to do a maximum 10,000 or 8,000, whatever. That's whatever y'all want me to do.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions on Angler's Choice?
So is $40 per boat unlimited right now?
Yes, that's what they're asking.
So in time's gone by, how many boats did we have?
You, they're usually pretty consistent around 300 boats.
So we're looking at $12,000?
$12,000.
Plus six rooms.
Plus rooms, yes. Total, that would be 24 room nights. But it's four nights.
Okay.
Six rooms for four nights.
All right.
Any other questions on that one?
Okay, next.
Was one that I sent in late, Alabama Bass Federation is Stan Brenneman's here. Sam was going to drive over. He's been, they've come here several times through the years. It's not one of the huge tournaments, but it's the ABF Alabama Bass Trail, I mean, Alabama Bass Federation. They want to bring two tournaments next year, one in May, practice May, the first and second, tournament May, the third and fourth. That particular tournament, I negotiated them to take care of their own hotels. So I got out of that. They do need a meeting space for 75 people, 60% stay in hotels. But it, like, again, it's not one of the larger, larger tournaments. This is one, Mike, that you, you had read where, or somebody said, no, mayor, yeah.
A maximum.
Has a maximum, $45 per boat, not to exceed $4,000. Then they want to come back in September for part of their championship. September, the official practice day, September the 4th through the 6th, tournament day, September the 7th through the 8th. They would need some hotel rooms for that particular one, because they're bringing in some national people. It is 60 to 65 boats from the, from the state of Alabama and Mississippi. They need three rooms for three nights, so it'd be nine room nights, needing, spending, meeting space for 150. 75 to 85% of these stay in hotels because they're coming from other parts besides just Alabama. And again, $45 per boat is what they're requesting, not to exceed, again, $4,000. We've had them before. It's been a few years since, since they've been here. They run a good tournament. It's just not a huge tournament. And then the last one, y'all are very familiar with, because we've had them for two years in a row, that Major League Fishing Toyota Series. They want to come back. They've been here twice and they've absolutely loved it. It's a huge tournament. Major League Fishing is a huge trail. They want to come late February or early March. Point out a couple of things about this one. They have, they, they run their, their statistics on 300 anglers, 150 boats, the last two years. This year in February, they were here, February the 23rd, they had 265 boats. And then last year, 2022, they had 325 boats. But they run their statistics off of prediction of 150 boats. So they've exceeded that quite a bit. So it'd be, if they do it at 150 boats, 150 co-anglers, that's 300 anglers. Competition days are Thursday through Saturday. So it's three days. The full field, all of them fish Thursday and Friday. So that's, in, in, in years past, between 500 and 600 fishermen for the first two days. Except, well, I take it back. This year, we had bad weather, so they let them all fish Saturday too. But what they usually do, they have all the anglers Thursday and Friday, and then they cut to 50 anglers on Saturday for the championship. They have to have a registration meeting on Wednesday for 450 people. We usually use the Civic Center. Based on the economic impact, based on 150 boats, 300 anglers is $973,000. Then they also, this one here is on TV, it's on, we get a lot of publicity. The total media value is $192,000 for media value, for a total economic impact of 1.1 million. So Major League Fishing, as y'all well know, is a, is a big deal. The host fee that they're asking, this is the same as last time, it's $17,500. Then we have other expenses of about $2,500. So what we've done the last two years is partner with y'all. The Chamber's done 10,000 and y'all have done 10,000. So they're asking for the same thing again this time.
If, if we decide that we don't want to participate in that amount, are they, they just not going to come?
Uh, I don't know.
You take forever $3,000 in tax, we got to generate $100,000 break even, as far as sales tax goes, not looking at the other stuff, but.
Oh, yeah.
If you put out $12,000, are we going to sell $400,000 more at the sales tax level?
Sales tax. But you also keep in mind, you get 7% of lodging tax. So.
That we give to somebody else, for the most part.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't know where all, all that goes. I know we get 1 and 3/4% of the county lodging tax and then plus a dollar. So obviously, we don't get our money, but we don't come close to getting our money back. Y'all come closer to getting your money back than we do, because you get 7% and plus the sales tax. We don't get any sales tax. But it's, I mean, it's obviously a return for the community. That's the, I mean, that's obviously the reason the Chamber does it. We, we want to help our member businesses and our hotels and restaurants and everything. That's, you know, we don't, we don't get a return on it.
Three upcoming tournaments coming that you just mentioned.
Four, that's a total of four that we just mentioned. There was, there was.
So how much for each one?
Okay, the first one, the first two that I mentioned was the, well, the first one was Angler's Choice. So it's $40 per boat. So if they have 300 boats, it'd be $12,000. The other two were $45 per boat and you figure, let's say, $65 a boat. So anybody good in their head?
It'd be cheaper than the 4,000.
Yeah.
If we just.
Maximum 4,000.
Up to 4,000, right?
Yeah, maximum 4,000.
4,000, two times.
On those next two, that one in May and one in September.
You'd be looking at about 3,000.
And then the last one is the Toyota Series, $20,000 total. And keep in mind also, we've got this, in fact, I invite y'all this weekend. We've got the McDonald's Big Bass Splash, which is now the largest bass tournament in the Southeast United States. We, this is our 19th year. Chamber pays for every bit of it, it's $25,000. We don't come to y'all for any help on that one. Now, if y'all want to help, I'll certainly, I'll take your money. But it's 25, it's the most expensive tournament we have. Last year, 1,325 fishermen from 28 states and Canada. So it's big. That's $25,000 straight out of my budget that we, we cover, we've always covered that entire thing for 19 years. But we certainly don't get our money back, but the community does, because it's a multimillion dollar impact.
All right. Anyone else having questions on any of these tournaments?
But I invite y'all out this weekend. Please, come out if you've never been out to the Big Bass Splash. It's a very unique tournament. It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Way-ins every single hour. Most of your bass tournaments, they go out and fish all day, come in and weigh five fish. If it's a two-day tournament, they weigh 10 fish, and whoever's got the total for five fish or 10 fish wins the tournament. This one here is a weigh-in every single hour. Pays the top 15 places every single hour. Top fish every hour wins $1,000. Whoever catches the one big fish for the entire weekend wins a $53,000 bass boat. But it's a great, and I, and if you're going to come out and you want to pick a day, come Sunday. Sunday afternoon, it is, they're standing room only at the Bait and Tackle Shop down at Goose Pond, and it is quite a production. A lot of people from all over the United States, and it's, it's quite a, quite a tournament. Very, very unique tournament, because they, again, they weigh in one fish every hour. So it's, it's crazy. Anybody who wants to volunteer, believe me, me and Lydia will take your name down immediately. We need, we need boat inspectors and we need people to register the fishermen every hour when they come in. So I encourage you to come. And it's fun. Anybody that's ever done it, I know Mike's done it every year. I think Debbie makes him do it. But Nita's done it. That's right, Nita's been, absolutely. So we encourage you, we'd love for you to come out and help us. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. We'll put all four of those on next week's meeting. All right, discuss the resolution award the bid for the microwave rehab and resurfing, resurfacing project. Ms. Phillips, will you go over that?
We posted one bid, advertised once in the Times Daily, mailed three bids, and received two bids for rehabilitating and resurfacing microwave. Rogers Group bid $359,997.20. It's recommended that the bid be awarded to Rogers Group as the lowest responsible bidder that met specifications, and also that the bid be awarded with a 5% contingency based on an expected increase in the asphalt index.
You see this in your packet. And just a reminder, this is basically goes from the front of Chick-fil-A to where the old Gino's was. This is that area right there. So all this work the street department's been doing in that area, it was fixed, repaving all that area. And of course, in front of Chick-fil-A where it's destroyed right now. So, but this does not include the intersection. That will be bid, what'd you say? Okay, so that's, that's coming up for bid, and we, we're all expecting it to be a lot higher than this, for that intersection. Of course, you've got the arms and everything, so. So anyone have any questions about this bid? No questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting then. Number three, discuss the tractor leases for the solid waste and landfill departments. Mr. Ledwell.
Thank you. These leases have been in effect for three, 13 years. They have expired, and we've got a couple of options that we can do on them. I made you all a copy. These, these new leases are for just two tractors. We have three. One of ours is very low hours, and the amount of money we owe for it, I would recommend that we just pay that one off and, and keep it, because we owe $8,875 on the one at the Scottsboro Office Landfill. There's two at the Big Landfill in Hollywood. But the one at Scottsboro just don't have a lot of hours on it, and there's no need of trading that thing in or anything else. We just need to keep it for a while. The ones at Hollywood have more hours, and they're not terrible. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you two options in front of you. We can do the leases, as you see, and take the amount of equity that's offered us with those two tractors and have a low payment on that new lease, which is $641 if you'll flip bid a month. Or I think we'll be okay if we want to just choose to pay these three machines off. We owe $8,875 a piece for two of them, and $12,250 for one of them. We can pay those off and then look at this lease in another year or two. I think we'll be fine with it. No more, we haven't had any trouble with them. So I, I, I don't have that in your package, because I just thought about it over the weekend, but I, I think I might just pay the balance and, and not re-lease them right now.
So we would own the tractor?
We would own them. And that's the way we set it up when we did it. We leased with an auction at the end, because I thought we might have some low hours, and it would be beneficial to us just to keep them.
What about the warranty of the, of this?
That's the thing, the warranty is expired. Once we pay those off, you know, the warranty's done. But if no more hours on them, I think I'd take a chance on them for a little while.
That was my next question. How many more hours it's going to be before we get into the maintenance part of it?
Well, you know, we use these machines mainly in your spring, summer. You know, it's not an all-year-round machine. I, I think we'll be fine to relook at this for another year. We, we should make it fine, and we may even choose to continue after a year, but looking at it in another year.
So you're saying in another year to sell these and then go back to lease?
Absolutely. I can tell you what these are worth right now. You know, the, the equity that you have in these is about $90,000. You know, if we wanted to sell them, trade them, whatever you want to do, it's there, but I think our equity will still be really high if we looked at it in another year.
All three of these 2019s?
Yes, sir. It's not a bad idea to swap them out, like Mr. Dahl was alluding to as far as warranty, but us using these just a seasonal use, I think we're okay to, to not get in another three-year lease, you know, for at least another year.
They're under five years' oath.
We, we can relook at next year and, and make a decision, because we can get some good money after using them more.
Mostly what are they used for, mowing?
They're used for bush hogging, yes, sir.
Anyone else having questions on the tractors? You'll get that to us all, and then we'll put it on next week's meeting to make a decision on it. Thank you. Number four, discuss short-term rentals. Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the last several years, we have seen an increase rate of use of short-term rental units amongst city bureaucrats, attorneys, finance directors and such. This is an area that is not addressed. The city at the current time does not allow it legally, though we know it happens. It happens with every Airbnb rental, every short-term rental that is happening in the city and its police jurisdiction. What this proposed ordinance will do is provide a framework for y'all to review and decide how you want to approach the issue. The ordinance starts off with basically rules and regulations, things to do with health, safety, and fire. Right now, there is no requirement that an Airbnb that is done in Scottsboro, Alabama, have a fire alarm. There is no requirement that there be signs posted or information provided, how to get out of a fire situation. You have all of these things that are done in hotel rooms that are not done in those kinds of situations. What this would do is change that. You would be required to have insurance, you would be required to fulfill the life safety code, basically like any other commercial rental thing. That's not to keep you from renting it, but it would put hotels, boarding houses, and Airbnb kinds of things on the same pathway. And that's what this ordinance does. The key thing to it, and someone asked me, well, would it affect RVs? No, it would not affect RVs. This has to do with dwellings and dwelling units, and they're defined in the ordinance. It would require someone who wanted to do this kind of thing to first apply for a permit. I don't know what fee you would want to charge, it's going to cost a little bit of money to do it. There's a blank in the proposed ordinance for that. Then who you're going to have do it. I thought that the building department might be the best place to start. Then a permit, which would be in line with the business license ordinance of the city to do this kind of thing. Have a provision that it would be allowed all over the city, if you wanted. You could put restrictions on it. But it could not be allowed in places where the subdivision restrictions, private subdivision restrictions, do not allow it. The, require smoke detectors, things of that nature. Not quite background checks, but information provided, provide for penalties, provide for parking, provide for limited occupancy. You couldn't have 14 people staying in one hotel room or one room in that kind of situation. It would then have a situation where you could, what you want the lodging tax to be. I left those blanks, logically, it would seem to me, with the same thing you charge a hotel, it's what you'd want to charge the Airbnb or whoever liked that. Be it allowed onto and charged with by the owner, who would pay on a monthly basis. This is for y'all to review. There, it's several ordinances around the state that this is based upon right now. A lot of this came out of Huntsville, some of it came out of other places. I would hazard a guess that most of the larger cities and medium-sized cities, if they have not done this yet, are about to.
I feel like we're kind of late to the game on this whole situation, and so we, we, we need to address this. I've also asked Mr. Kenner about doing a public input, to give the public a chance to speak on this, whoever would like to. So I'm going to schedule that for the next work session, which will be next Monday. So anyone have any questions or comments about the short-term rentals?
Will we have to come up with a, if, if they don't follow the guidelines, a penalty, a fine?
Yes, sir, it is established in the ordinance.
Okay.
So when they apply for a permit, then the building department will go out and inspect? Is that?
That would, that is a possibility. At least they would receive it and have the right to go out and inspect. It does not require them, I don't think, to inspect. But you have to swear under oath that certain things are there.
And another question I have is, so, you know, there probably are some already here.
Yes.
And if the neighbors are probably going to be the ones that will help us check on them, but if somebody calls in and says, somebody's renting out an Airbnb next to my house, who will go out and check on it? Would it be?
I would assume the city's enforcement officer.
I guess just a question, how, how would we check on it?
It's a very good question.
Mm-hmm. And it could be addressed by us or the mayor also. Yeah. Because we, you can also be looking at having a business license, you know.
Yeah, you'll be required to have a business license.
So.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions on this? No questions. Like I said, we'll move this to next week for the work session and give the public a chance to put input on this before we move any further on. Well, that will conclude this work session. So there's no delegations tonight. We've got to report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I've got tonight, I think the Water, Sewer, and Gas Board started their Ashmore Lane project today. Is that correct? Tried to start, okay. Ashmore Lane, at least one side, will be closed for some period of time, and it will be followed at some point by the city's repair of the culvert on Scott Street, right at that same intersection. So everybody's patience while this is all going on. But they did start, or tried to start today, but it'll be going on for some period of time. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Yes, I do have something today. I'd like the council and mayor to consider utilizing any ARPA funds that we may have left to, and earmark those funds to repair, modify, a number of different maintenance problems at Bynum and Veterans Fields. Buildings, gates, fencing, bathrooms, sun shades, or nets, water fountains don't work, snack bar, paintings, stuff like that. So it's a lot of cosmetic stuff. And personally, I believe that these maintenance issues have been needed for a long time, and it compounded during COVID, where the maintenance issues were let go even more. Therefore, I believe this project fits the ARPA program due to the magnitude of neglect of the field and buildings at Veterans and Bynum Fields. I would recommend that the RecCom Director, Mayor, and maybe the city council member that is the chair for that department, do a walkthrough and note all repairs that are needed for safety and appearance, and, and bring those back to us so we can estimate a cost in how long, or how much of the repairs or cosmetics we have to do. I think we owe this to our citizens, our visitors, and, and the Bynum Foundation that gave us this land to pour these park facilities. That's all that has.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Mr. Wheeler, I hate to ask you, with Mr. Green in the room, but do you know how much ARPA funds we have left? But I don't want him to know how much we have left. Thank you.
Just for me, eyeballing it, I figured anywhere from 50 to $150,000.
That's, that's without tackling, yeah, that's not, not tackling fields, though.
No, no.
And so, yes, okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Ashford?
Mayor, whenever you can fit it in your schedule, the paving committee would like to meet.
Yeah, I was thinking, we were talking about that today.
Okay, good.
We'll get that set up for next week at the, at the latest. We'll get that set up for next week at the, at the latest.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
No, thank you. Ms. Frederick?
Uh, yes, the summer reading program starts this week at the Scottsboro Library. If Jerry could add a little bit to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to start the day, uh, last year, we had about five hundred and sixty-five kids come through, and hoping to break seven hundred this year. We need you to help do it, and come by the library to sign up. Uh, we have different activities for them throughout the summer. We have things to help encourage literacy skills, help talk the summer slide, and show them that kids are participating in the summer reading program, and do much better than next year, literacy skills, especially for children. So send them by the library, and we'll get them started. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Uh, just to remind everyone, uh, next week, we will have a meeting and a work session followed by, because June nineteenth, the next week after that, there'll be no meeting. That's a holiday. June twenty-sixth, um, we'll do a meeting and work session on twelfth, and so we'll have a meeting on the twenty-sixth. Then July third, there'll be no meeting, that'll be a holiday, and so July tenth, we'll do a work session and meeting. So we've got a couple of double-ups, so everyone be prepared for that. I have nothing else, I appreciate everyone coming. Where's Jarn?